Hey, everyone. Good evening. My name is Eric Moore. This is the Concord Town Meeting Study Committee. This is our meeting of November twelfth, twenty twenty four, and I'm calling our meeting to order, and thank you for coming. So. Let's see, Alice Kaufman is volunteer to clerk tonight. I guess the first step is to take roll. Folks, who are online, please speak up. Keith Bergman, please.
Present.
There. Thank you. I do not see Katie Bresnik. Kristen Haggerty, please.
Here.
Thank you. Alice Kaufman, please.
Yeah.
Thank you. Eric Moore, present. We're not expecting Para Sharp to tell tonight. Phil Swain, I see you online, please.
Here.
Thank you. Chase Thompson, I do not see online. We'll see what happens there. And Eric Van Loon, we're not expecting tonight. So we do have a quorum, but it's a lean quorum. So there we go. Our agenda tonight, we have a rather full agenda. Beginning with public comment, typical public comment, two minutes, you know, if you need multiple at bats, fine. We open the meeting with up to fifteen minutes of public comment, two minutes each, please, if you have it. And it is certainly welcome, so. Check in.
And it looks like you're gonna have public comment with each of these things as well.
As well, yeah. And Katie Bresnik is now present as well. Hi, Katie, thank you. And yeah, so the little stars typically, as we go through the agenda, we do provide opportunities for public comment. You know, in the context of the agenda item as well. So any public comment online or in person, we'll come back to you, David Carr, on the agenda. Seeing none, moving forward. Chairs updates. Oh, minutes, minutes to approve. We have minutes from October twenty second, twenty twenty four. And minutes from October, oh, sorry, minutes from August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, and minutes from October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four to approve. Like, I'm happy to approve them both in one vote. Make it a motion to approve the minutes, please. Kristen, please.
Yes, I move to approve the.
And a second, please.
Wait, didn't say, well, the minutes, you want October twenty second and October twenty ninth?
No, 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 they're not there. Just the twenty seventh of August.
August twenty seventh.
And October twenty eighth. Yeah, please.
Well, the twenty ninth were in your packet.
Oh, really?
There was.
I didn't see that. And the twenty ninth, prepared by Shannon McAndrew.
They were in there.
All right. Sorry. So also the October twenty ninth. So that would be three sets of minutes to approve. Can I get a second for that, please?
A second, but I see Carmen has her hand up.
Thank you. Carmen, recognize you, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that I was present at the October twenty ninth meeting for the first hour. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Any discussion on any of the meeting, any of the minutes beyond that? I'll take a roll call, just moving quickly. Keith Bergman, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Katie Bresnik, please.
Aye.
Kristen Haggerty, please.
Aye.
Alice Kaufman, please.
Oh.
It sounds like an aye, Alice.
Oh.
Eric Moore, aye. Phil Swain, please. You might be unmute, Phil. Can't tell.
Yes.
There you are. Thank you. Good. Okay, so approved the minutes from. August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four, October twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and October twenty ninth. Thank you, Shannon, twenty twenty four. So chairs comments. So this meeting tonight, in the context of the work we're doing this fall. Many of these things relate to separating deliberation and voting. One of the things that we're sort of still carrying is the clickers conversation. Coming up, our next meeting, we're gonna do a lot of voting, I hope. We will, and we'll review the packet for the select board. Also, at that time, Keith Bergman will lead a discussion around the prospect of a spring fall me, a spring town meeting and a fall town meeting. So we've talked a bit about that in terms of organizing that, that, that topic. We're gonna be in front of the select board on December second. I'm not sure what we're gonna talk about on December ninth, and then there's a first Friday forum for the league the thirteenth of December. And then we'll take a little bit of time off and meet again January thirteenth. That'll be our first meeting in the new year. I had a Carmen, I see your hand is a, is that, is that a new hand or an old hand? And you're unmute. Still unmute. So once you unmute, we'll, we'll see if you want to be recognized. I had a good conversation with our town manager. Carrie LaFleur about the work that the committee is doing. And very, very open minded, very, very willing to entertain stuff that we're doing and will allow us to have some good conversations with other members, senior members of town staff. So it's great. I also met with the moderator from Carlisle and the chair of their town meeting study committee. And it was a very, very amiable conversation. I think the issues that Carlisle is seeing for their, their town meeting are very similar to what, what people talk about here. So. Alice, if I'd say your hand up, is that?
Well, I did just for a quick second to say that unfortunately, I know we're taking a number of votes. You just mentioned on the twenty fifth, I will not be at that meeting.
Okay. Good, thank you. Moving forward, electronic voting. So our previous meeting, we spent a chunk of time talking about clickers. And we heard from the principals of that, that motion in town meeting twenty four. David Carr had prepared something and didn't have an opportunity to speak. So David, I invite you to come to the table and read what you have and don't feel rushed.
Okay.
And I don't think we got a, I don't think I got the written copy of this into the packet. But.
I, I neglected to put my name on it.
I did, and I put your name at the bottom of it.
Well, for two, Shannon.
You're asking me if I go through the packet.
Yeah, well, I wrote it, all right? Okay, please, David Carr.
Okay, thank you. All right, the best way to understand how much time voting takes is to watch the recordings of town meeting and time the votes. A typical vote in Concord takes less than half a minute, starting with the words, we're ready to vote on Article thirty. Clickers add at least half a minute, which is not much, but multiply that by the number of times we vote and weigh against the chance that we spend a few extra minutes on one vote because we need to tell us to count it. The success stories for clickers, where it only adds half a minute, come from towns with much lower attendance than Concord. Wayland, less than four hundred this year. Concord, sorry, Carlisle, about two hundred, Maynard, one hundred and fifty one. We had one thousand one hundred and thirty one. That's why we should pay attention to what happened in Acton this year. When you have more than four hundred voters, they had about twenty five hundred. You have more failed devices that need to be replaced during the vote. More people dropping their clickers and losing the batteries. And more retries because the base station failed to record all the votes. At the end of the meeting, when Acton had about as many voters remaining as Wayland did, they shaved several minutes off their previous best time to finish a vote. On the other hand, the written secret ballot is slow. I supervise the last written ballot in Concord. It took about twelve minutes to collect the ballots, after which the meeting took up new business, but the counting took much longer to complete. I would not expect to get the results of a hand counted secret ballot in less than thirty minutes from when voting begins. Regarding cost, in his presentation for the last meeting, proponent Mark Martinez disputed the statement that clickers could cost five thousand dollars to fifteen thousand dollars per meeting. My colleagues and I got those figures from Mr. Martinez's presentation at the select board hearing in February and repeated them in good faith. But I'm willing to refer instead to the fifty thousand dollars a year that Wayland budgets for clickers, with the understanding that since we have far more voters in a meeting, and we tend to go for more nights, we should budget more. The strongest argument for clickers in Concord is privacy. In Wayland, where every vote is a secret ballot, that is explicitly cited as a reason. But in Carlisle this year, there were twelve voice votes and three that were a combination of clickers and a teller talent, not one true secret ballot. Acton managed just one secret ballot in which they elected a try, a library trustee. For the secret ballot we cast last week, we used the very best technology. A piece of paper, a felt tipped pen, and a machine that counted our ballots and stored them in case an audit or recount was necessary. Those paper records are considered an essential feature by experts on voting systems. When we vote by raising our voting slips, we don't need the paper record because the vote is audited instantly and automatically by many eyes. Clickers have neither the paper record nor the instant audit. Lastly, if just raising a slip in the midst of a crowded town meeting is so fraught, what must it take to step up to a microphone to share information and concerns? We need to hear from the shy, vulnerable people in our community, not just the brave and secure. Like many people here, I am deeply concerned by incivility and public discourse. My fear is that if we insulate ourselves from it, it will be easier to bear, but it will just get worse. I propose instead that we dedicate ourselves to becoming a better community. Thank you.
Thank you, David Carr. So do we have any discussion within the committee about clickers at this time? Katie Bresnik, please.
I guess I just wanted to kind of align on our understanding of what it means for the time of the meeting. So I think what I'm hearing is, in Concord specifically, it's unless we have maybe one or more counted votes, clickers would, could increase the time of the meeting a small amount. If we have a counted vote, it's quite likely that clickers may reduce the time of the meeting. Is that everyone's understanding, or am I misunderstanding that because we do have a lot of information from different sources?
I, I think it's pretty close. I think, you know, there different clickers can be configured. So, for example, the Acton clicker system, I forget the vendor there, it's not one of the big three. But Acton, I talked to a select board member there, and Acton is actually looking to replace their system with a different system. In part because their experience with the clickers is that they take too long to record a vote for their meeting. The Carlisle moderator was talking about using a twenty second window for their clickers. So I'll assert that the way that the system is configured and its capacity, as, you know, it could be very quick, it could be a little bit longer. I think, though, my working understanding has been that it's about the same, you know, plus or minus, right? So it could mean fifteen minutes for, for a three hour meeting. In terms of the regular, you know, raise the ballot slips, kind of, kind of counting, you know, estimation. But clearly, when, when there is a hand counted ballot, or a, or a secret ballot, clickers save a lot of time. You know, to, to speak to David Carr's point, private ballot, you know, in the range of thirty minutes for a count. And so the question, though, is how frequently do we have an accurately counted, do we need to have an accurately counted ballot? With respect to the, the, the time, time, time for the meeting?
Yeah, I, I think my, yeah, my follow up question is exactly that, is how often are we actually counting in Concord's town meetings? And apologies if I missed that in the packet. I know there was none last year. But historically, is this something that we regularly do or not? And I see Carmen has her hand raised. She may have the answer for me.
Yeah. Let me, let me go to Philip, and then we'll go to you, Carmen, okay? Philip, please.
Yes, so two things about using clickers. First of all, I don't think we have to use clickers for every vote if we decide to implement clickers. Can either be at the moderator's discretion, if the moderator wants a call for a vote by clickers. Or if somebody wants to ask for a private ballot under the current, private vote under the current rules, which now require paper to be ripped off and handed in, we could just vote by clicker. And finally, the having it that way would eliminate the strategic use of a private ballot, which I've seen from time to time. When a group that wants to delay the meeting calls for a private ballot just to slow things down. So by having the clickers available to count when there is a need for a private ballot, that basically gives us, you know, the best of both worlds. Otherwise, on the non-private ballot questions, we just do what we do now, raise hands.
Good, thank you. Carmen, I'll go to you, please.
Hello. I I just wanted to answer Katie's question, and I would say that the counted votes, you know, at most, we have one or two in a meeting, and as was the case last year, we often have no counted votes at all. And I would say that in a counted vote situation, we will save anywhere from fifteen to twenty five minutes on a counted vote. But on an ordinary vote, it, I agree with you, Eric, that it's pretty much six and one half dozen of the other, whether we do a counted vote, or as long as we make the window small enough, and as long as the technology works well, about the same.
Any other discussion on clickers? Kristen Haggerty, please.
I'm going back to, I'm glad Katie asked about the time, because I think she wanted to know how it would impact, because we wanted to, you know, our, our charge was to make the meeting more inclusive, effective and responsive. So I'm glad we defined that. So if inclusive is that all who want to attend can, effective is that we make efficient use of people's time at the meeting. And that people have ready means to make well informed decisions, and responsive is that town meeting adapts to provide the experience that people say they want. And that the town meeting functions credibly as a representative body of the town. So I, I have not been persuaded that clickers are, will, will make it faster. So I think it is kind of the privacy argument. And so really wanting to make sure that although the survey came in with a lot of people wanted to use clickers, I really, you know, appreciate what's been pointed out that I, I think there needs to be more information to the public at large about, you know, what that means, what they would be giving up. You know, to, like, to Katie's point, well, you know, if everybody says, well, yeah, if we can shave a couple of hours off, then yeah, I want clickers. But if we say, well, wait, that's not gonna make it any faster. You know, it might be slower for check in, you know, and all those things. You know, so I think it would be, I, I want to make sure that we take the survey results with a grain of salt, as you put in your notes. That there was far fewer people who said privacy was important to them than using the clickers. So I guess I just want to make sure that, you know, the recommendation, I heard what Phil said, which I think was one of the recommendations you had outlined, which could be to the moderator's discretion. My only question is, do we have, I have two questions. Do we have any data on how long it takes to check people in with clickers? And Stefan, you, you might have some information about that, because we tried it once. And then what do you do? Like, how many quick clickers do you purchase or rent? Because our meetings fluctuate by, you know, double, right? They go from four hundred to twelve hundred. And I would imagine that is still going to likely be the case, because people are still gonna come for issues. So does anybody have any information on that logistics of it? I know we don't have to cover everything, but I want to make sure that if we're making a recommendation, that we're kind of using clickers at the moderator's discretion, that we're able to tell people, yes, we can do this, but it might add, you know, twenty minutes to your check in time, and and what do we do if we don't have enough that evening?
What Acton did when they had a, that town meeting, which was a two and a half override. They didn't expect, well, they didn't have enough clickers for the twenty four hundred people that attended.
Okay.
And so the excess folks got paper ballot slips.
Okay. And so did they count them there and, like, extend the times they needed?
I think they I think they put them in one row.
Okay.
So, yeah, okay. Yeah.
And do they purchase their clickers or rent them?
They purchased those.
Okay, so they said, we're gonna purchase two thousand.
Yeah.
Because that should cover us for most of the time. Okay.
So, yeah, I don't know the answer. I mean, my, my, my estimate was we would buy fifteen hundred, but I, I can't. You know, I, I think really, the, the, the bits around how many to buy, which vendor.
Yeah, and I know we don't have to get into that. It was more along lines of like, you know, how often we have to replace them. And, and, you know, I think about the battery thing a lot. I think about that. And then are, are, is the, is the comment going to be, well, you know, this isn't valid because somehow not everybody's votes were registered, you know, like, I'm already anticipating some of the kind of pushback.
Katie, I see your hand up. Is that?
Yes, I have another question regarding budget. And so I'm hearing that this would cost around fifty K at least annually. Is that, am I?
I'm not, no, no, I don't think so. I think that's high. I think it depends upon the vendor. The summary that I sent out this afternoon talked about a benchmark of what Carlisle spent. And using that as a benchmark, and assuming that we bought fifteen hundred, we could expect an expense to buy of about fifty K from one vendor, Meridia. Then there's a different vendor OTI that is, tends to be twice to, to, to more than twice as expensive. If we were renting, my estimate based upon a report from Chatham, looking at costs for clickers, was that rental would cost about ten grand per meeting from Meridia. And in the neighborhood of twenty five thousand dollars a year per meeting from OTI. But again, those are, you know, those are hand waved. Until, until we really get a number from a vendor, we can't say.
Right. So I'm trying to understand, because I feel, am I remembering correctly that town meeting costs around ninety thousand annually? So this would be a significant increase in cost for very little time savings. So I think that's important for the committee to keep in mind that I think people in town are trying to find ways to be fiscally conservative while we do have a lot of increased spending. And if this is a significant increase in the budget for town meeting with little time savings, I think that is to keep in mind. So, thank you.
So I appreciate your point. I, I am, I think about cost as well. But I also believe that, and Keith, you know, as a former town manager, you can clarify this, but I believe that the choice around spending really will fall to the town manager here. Is that, that correct?
I, I would say so, that the administration gets a budget, which is a large number, and if there are expenses like, you know, and so they would have a budget for town meeting, which presumably should be increased by some factor for the, for the coming fiscal year. And how that money is spent is determined by the administration. It, it's, you know, do they rent it? Do they, you know, how many town meetings do you have? How many nights does, does it run? Those are variables that you'd need to, you'd need to budget for the, the potentials. But even if the cost is ninety, you know, is like ninety thousand dollars for a town meeting, or, you know, soup to nuts. And we were gonna have a couple of town meetings, say, at the, you know, in the annual and a spec, and a fall special. Those are relatively low costs out of a multi-million dollar budget, the size of Concord's. And, and and so while the costs are a factor for me on this, on the clickers, it's the privacy issue that and if it costs, if it costs a little money, that's the cost of privacy.
Sure. Good. Thank you. Let me go to Cameron McKennitt, and then and, yeah, Cameron, please.
Yeah, hi, thanks, everybody. So I won't, I, I just want to make sure that we have one fact, right, which is we did a survey. We got over a thousand responses. The single question that had the greatest favorable response was, do you want to have clickers or not? And eighty six percent of our townspeople said yes. So I guess I'll just leave it at that for the rest of the committee to ponder, but I, I consider my, my fellow townspeople to be intelligent people who are reasonably well informed and who took the time to respond to that survey. And if it was fifty fifty, I, I would, I would think one way, but, you know, eighty six percent, and having it be the single question that had the, the largest disparity of response, I think is something that we should keep in mind. Thanks.
Good, thank you. Phil Swain, please.
So I, I just wanted to remind everybody. I mentioned this at the start of this whole committee. The schools have purchased clickers years ago, so they may be out of date, but they purchased clickers thinking they would use them in classes, but they're not. So we should, we should at least explore whether the school would give its clickers to the town, since the town paid for them. And we could use them. And I don't know how many they have, but it might be possible to save some money by using those school clickers, at least as a first generation. And if they were clickers for schoolchildren, they're probably pretty easy to use. So they might work.
Good, thank you. So I would take that as a follow up with the CIO or somebody on, on her team. Carmen Reese, please.
I, I would just suggest that I think that the committee doesn't need to get into the weeds on exactly how we would implement the use of electronic voting. If it's enough, if the committee believes that there should be a recommendation to to institute electronic voting and leave it to town staff to do it in the most cost effective and sensible way. You know, for town staff, you know, for example, let the town decide whether they'd like to own the clickers and handle the IT themselves, or whether they would like to rent the clickers and, and do it the way Wayland does, and have OTI come and handle it soup to nuts, so they never have to worry about it. And, you know, that's an adjustment choice. And I, I think I have to agree with Keith that it is a, you know, when you think about the overall budget, the expense of, you know, the, the cost wouldn't be a reason not to do it if otherwise there, assuming we could find the money, the cost isn't a reason not to do it as long as it's a recommendation of the committee that we do it. And it seems to me the committee is thinking about the right things, about what community sentiment is, and about whether community sentiment is based on the belief that clickers would save time, or the belief that clickers would afford a private vote, which would be a good thing, or some combination of both, and whether the committee concurs with that. Thanks.
Good, thank you. I'll, I'll note that I was trying to do one thing here. I'll note that Chase Thompson has joined. Oh, hey, Chase, I recognize you, in fact. Please.
Perfect timing.
Yeah, how about that?
I, I think to, to Cameron's point, eighty six percent is probably about as close to a hundred percent as you'll, you'll get on any survey question. And as I've listened to this, it, it sounds like we could recommend a trial, a rental period, if you will, see how it goes, work out the kinks, and then survey again if that wasn't overly complicated to do it and see what people thought. So I, I think I've been thinking about this a little bit more, like, are we permanently changing the culture and the process of town meeting? But if we have an option to try something that's relatively cost effective and then see how it goes to survey, that feels like a, a pretty logical middle ground. And I think people would appreciate the eighty six percent that wanted clickers would probably appreciate seeing them at the next town meeting.
Thank you. Do we, how close are we to, so I, I don't, you know, I drafted a motion. I don't know if the committee feels that we are ready to make a decision, or if this is in fact a motion that we would like to vote on. I, you know, we can spend some time, we've been about a half hour, we can spend some more time in this tonight. Or I can, you know, I can share a draft motion, and we can look at this to vote in the next meeting. Alice, please.
It, it's actually hard. I, maybe other people are better at taking notes, but it's hard to take notes for them as a clerk and also have opinions.
Yeah, sorry.
It's fine. I think the conversation is good. It's the same conversation we've had for a long time, and it's about whether there is actually a time saving on the use of clickers. Regardless of the, I think we have a general agreement, like, clickers will not save time, but there is a general interest based on the survey that people want to use them anyway. So I, in terms of a motion, if we were to vote on it tonight, I probably would leave out the terms by which the committee would recommend clickers. I would just say the town meeting study committee moves that town meeting approved the use of clickers. Or that when, we'll figure out the language with Carmen, but without the, the language that gives why we voted in the way that we did, we are urging the towns We voted in the way that we did. We are urging the towns to move forward with acquired clickers. Personally, I also believe, as Chase notes, that the trial would dispel the time savings for people. And if we tried it and there's no time savings, we come back and say, hey, guys, we tried them and there's no time savings. If the question is, as we heard in some of the earlier conversations, want to privacy a vote and that people would be encouraged to attend. If they knew their vote was not public, we could also measure that and say, oh, look, we have. You know, eighteen hundred new people paid to town meeting because and asked the after question as Carmen always does in her survey afterwards. Did you come because the private, the vote was private? And there would be more data from which to make a firm decision to continue the use of clickers or not.
So I may, thank you. I I I think I may have made a mistake in not putting privacy on the agenda tonight. So we didn't take a vote on privacy at the previous meeting, nor did I put a motion forward. In my email this afternoon, I drafted a motion, but again, we're not on the agenda for that.
So I guess my my feeling is if we were to put forth a motion. With no qualifying statement about it. I would imagine that we would be able to describe why we're recommending it. And then I think I would want to illustrate some sort of minority opinion on that. Or at least both sides.
So so I'm new at this part, right? You know more than I do. So there's the motion, you do. So there's the motion and then there's some narrative around that motion. But the narrative is just a narrative and and the motion is what we assert. So so the question is, what what's the motion?
So if the motion was, you know, that we're going to use clickers, and if you want to use clickers, everybody raise their hand. I would want to make sure that everybody get the full sense who hadn't listened to all of this discussion. This is, you know, this is how, what we discussed. We decide, you know, we learned that it's not a time savings, that, you know, it's primarily for privacy. And this is what is lost by not voting next to your neighbor. I think that's a really important part to come before all of town meeting. So if it's not in the motion, which, you know, it sounds like you have kind of the straightforward motion, it should at least be in the explanation. That's kind of all I'm advocating for.
Yeah, so that can definitely just be in the minutes.
Well, it would be in the presentation.
Right.
At town meeting.
Yeah, narrative, yeah, as it were. Thank you. Keith, please, and then Phil Swain.
The consensus that if I could, if I'm he- hearing the conversation, the consensus that we might have reached. Is that. The. Is that the, if the committee recommends that clickers be used at the next town meeting. It's with the general understanding that that's a, that's a trial, that's a test. And that we will know more then. And we're eighty six percent of the respondents. Are looking to try clickers. And we don't have any compelling reason not to. And we have a compelling reason for those that are, that that have identified privacy. As an important motivator in the conduct of town meeting and maybe even increasing the attendance of town meeting. That perhaps we would be able to agree on a motion to recommend that. The that clickers be used at the next town meeting on a trial basis.
Okay, thank you, Keith. I'm concluding, Phil, I'll get you in a second. I'm concluding that we're not going to vote on this tonight. I I need to come back with a motion. And a narrative that we approved. I I I don't feel that, I don't feel confident in voting on this right now with that really sort of taking a breath over what the motion is going to be. Phil, please.
I actually was going to move that we approve the motion as written and then as amended by you. To delete the, you know, the rationale, because a motion doesn't need to have that in there. This, the the top part of your motion, Keith. I mean, Eric, is is a good motion, is is a good motion. It just says the, makes the point of the policy that we're recommending. And. And doesn't require a lot of detail. I think we all could agree on this and get this over with now. By the way, I I do think you're within the bounds. If you wanted to add something about privacy, you could. Because that's within the scope of this agenda and certainly was in the scope of last week's agenda, which we spent two hours talking about. So I would, I move that we should approve the the emotion as written by Eric on the screen now.
A second?
I can second it so we can have discussion about it.
Sure, okay. Seconded by Krista. Alice, any comments from you?
I guess I'm, I I'd like to understand that the language doesn't sound like warrant language nor recommendation to me. If we could say the town meeting study committee. Just recommends the use of clickers on a trial basis. At town meeting. Because it's straightforward, we're making a recommendation, doesn't be, that's what we're saying to Carmen and others in town. That we think that that should happen. And that I thought I heard a growing consensus. And that's part of what I, you know, pulling the board here to see if we all agree that let's try it. And see if we can collect some data about whether it's effective. Does it save time? Do more people show up to vote because the vote is is private? And then we move forward with something for this year that we do think will improve town meeting.
So so Alice, I agree, except I don't think we need to add the details of a trial basis. Because that may be, the the powers that may be may decide they don't want it on a trial basis. I think we're recommending it, period. And it's up to the discretion of the powers that be, whether it's a trial basis or not. Depends on the funding and so on. Our job is just to. Do the high level policy.
Uh, thank you. Keith Bergen, please.
Yeah, if the votes tonight, I'll vote for a a motion B, but I won't vote in favor of otherwise.
Cameron, I'm going to channel you from your comment at the last meeting and say, why a trial? Commit, is that fair?
Uh, yeah, you can always, you can always in the future say, I don't like it, I want to, I want to change it, but I don't under. I'm not sure I understand the why it has to be on a trial. I'm with Phil. You just recommend the use of clickers.
I'm gonna recognize Kristen and then I'm going to go to the public for comment.
Um, so I guess one of the questions I have is, I would imagine we have kind of a a number of recommendations that we're going to make. And I I worry about making individual recommendations without looking at the the body of them. You know, because the the majority is, you know, making the meeting shorter. That's what we've heard is going to really get people in.
That's been our focus.
That that has been a focus and and this this does not necessarily address that. And so I'm wondering, and and I know that we're doing this for a time so that we could get it on the warrant and things like that. But it still does feel like there's a little time left where we could say, you know, kind of this is the suite of recommendations. And and this might be one of them. That's my only thought about kind of going to it right now.
Uh, let me go to Carmen and then I'd like to go to Chase and then I'll go to the public, please. Carmen, please.
Um, thank you. I I just want to note, this doesn't have to go on the warrant. If if you make this recommendation. I will certainly work with the town manager's office to figure out if we have the budget to do it at the twenty twenty five annual town meeting. And it would probably be my suggestion to the town manager that we rent in the first instance. And decide whether we like the technology that we rent and then make a decision later about whether to buy. And that would give us a little more time to figure out whether we want to, for example, buy the same kind of clickers that they own in Carlisle. So that we could buy fewer of them and just, you know, and borrow theirs. I mean, there are a lot of things to think about logistically in terms of the administration. But it doesn't need to be a warrant article. It does not need to be a bylaw. This is the sort of recommendation that if it comes out of this committee, it will. I certainly as the moderator will act on it. And I would expect that we have, you know, last year's budget was not written with this in it. But we do have a pretty good budget for a town meeting. And we might have to squeeze on something else in order to have, you know, maybe we'll have less comfortable chairs that we rent, you know, so we'll we'll figure. I I'm sure we can figure something out.
Good, thank you. Chase, I'd like to go to you. I haven't heard from you. In terms of the motion.
Uh, Carmen addressed my question, which was around how this gets communicated and how somebody would make the financial decision around trial versus not. So I think maybe that was addressing your point, Keith, on whether or not we'd be comfortable voting for this without the recommendation of trial. So Carmen, hearing you, I'm I'm totally good with it now.
Um, so to understand, we're still looking at item A here as the motion that we would vote on. That the recommending the use of clickers in a trial basis seems to be. A little more detail than than a little more operational detail than than perhaps we want to assert. Is that correct? Uh, let me go to the public, please. Stefan, if you would, or Michael. For the record, Michael Williams, Concord resident. Thank you. Two minutes, please.
I I guess the question that I see before us is that. Sorry, called most for clickers considering both time and privacy. Uh, since we're unclear on whether time is saved. Uh, the question of privacy brings up the thought that the initial intent of town meeting was that we stand up in front of each other. We debate, we decide, and we decide in front of each other, knowing that. We'll be standing against a neighbor that we'll work with the next day. If we take this away for privacy reasons, we lose the the. Impetus that reminds us during meetings that whatever the decision is, I'm going to work with this individual the next day. I will be having commerce with this individual the next day. And ultimately, we're deciding something for the good of our community. I I think what I'm not hearing in any of the discussion is that the move to privacy, if that's paramount. Changes the flavor of town meeting. And. Almost to David's comments. Has potential to possibly make us a more coarse. Community. So so I I I think that should always be part of what's in mind, wanting to go forward. On however this this motion is drafted.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Stefan, did you have another point?
Stefan Vater, Seven River Street. To the, with the point of the time savings, I think you can measure down to the seconds, how long it takes to take a vote. But if you're talking about. The time commitment for a voter to attend town meeting, they need to get to town meeting. To Kristen's question, they need to check in. It will add time. I wasn't there for the trial. I I was there for the trial as a participant, not as a checker in her at that point, but that will take time. I think on a three night town meeting, if you're talking about saving twenty minutes, is that really worth? The cost of what you're giving up in terms of debating things with your residents, your neighbors. Who you're going to be neighbors tomorrow, you're still going to be neighbors. I think. I think the eighty six percent saying they like the clickers. If you subtract the percentage of people who say they're concerned about privacy. The vast majority don't seem to be concerned about privacy. They're just thinking that it's going to save time. They may think that. I don't think that's real. And I suppose a trial would prove that or not. I think the interesting question to add to a survey. Is if we use clickers, would you come to town meeting?
Sure, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, I think I think that's that's my issue is what what's getting lost in in this debate is, I think I heard somebody say. Kind of like, I don't know, I wrote down like, what's what's the harm in in trying it? And I think we realize that there is potential, you know, harm, but so that, and and it didn't come through in the survey. Because as as good as it was, we know there was a lot of things missing in the way that we had to state things, but I guess there's a couple more comments.
So Katie Bresnik and then Phil, please.
Um, it was my, I thought from the discussion that we were interested to vote on on B and not A, and maybe I misunderstood.
Uh, Phil, that was your motion. Can you clarify?
Yeah, I would clean this up a little bit by having the A be the preamble. But it would, it would be something like the teams, TMSC concludes, delete that. The, at the beginning of A, the team concludes it would improve and therefore recommends the use of clickers. I would not include on a trial basis because I don't think we should be getting into those details. That's the, that's up to the powers that be, including the moderator, the, you know, finance director. And everybody else just recommends the use of clickers. Yeah, period. This is.
So this is the motion then. The TMSC concludes that the use of clickers would improve or should improve. The experience of town meeting and therefore recommends the use of clickers.
Would. Is my idea.
I would say may.
Okay, may, fine.
Sorry, who was that? Alice?
Yeah.
Yeah, may improve, okay. And and.
We don't know.
I think we should vote on this just to get it, make some progress. I know Eric wants to make some progress. And this would kind of put, take this and and put, you know, we can move on beyond this for other policy issues. And we can all clean it all up when it comes to a final vote of the suite of recommendations that we make.
I'm just parsing that. I feel okay about voting on this motion as it is. I mean, you you made a motion, we had a second. Uh, I think we seem to have some agreement on the motion in front of us. I'd be happy to take a vote on this tonight. Uh, and if we need to come back to a a a motion to qualify this, I'd be okay with that in two weeks from now. Uh, I think from my perspective, I think this clearly, this accurately reflects our understanding. Um, I have reserved, we have not voted on the privacy question. Uh, so I think the, to vote on that and then to 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 think about this again, if we need to do that next week, we could do that.
Tell me, tell me, voting on the privacy, how does that impact our recommendation?
So the motion I drafted for privacy is that it's going to be A, B, C, or D, right? It's at the, our committee concludes, one option is all votes, both procedural motions and motions from the warrant are preferably private. A different option is that all votes and motions from the warrant are preferably private. A third option is that the moderator should assertively determine which votes will be private. In other words, a moderator could choose that I think this is a high interest issue, it's high energy or whatever. So the moderator could say this will be a private vote. And the fourth option is that what we have right now, the status quo. Which is the meeting can always entertain a procedural motion for a private vote.
So so does that aspect change how anybody on the committee is thinking about this?
Well, one second. So. It's a great question, right? Because I think if we if we concluded that, you know. And and sort of, you know, consistent with the position that no vote should be public, then one of the legs for the rationale for clickers would go away. Um, if we do conclude that some vote should be private, sorry, I'm using my outside voice again. You know, or that all votes should be private, then then there's a stronger argument for use of clickers. And that's, that's why, you know, I had included that caveat principally in terms of providing an efficient means of private voting. Uh, or precise counts, because that that can also be a driver. Um, so I think, you know, the committee's consideration of a decision around privacy then does inform a motion around clickers.
I think so. So but 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 I know this, this one came up before.
Right. That's the mistake I made because I didn't put privacy on the agenda tonight. Alice, please.
Well, I think I disagree with that statement that you just made, Eric. I do think that privacy is at the heart of the use of clickers. If clickers don't save time, then clickers have to be used for another purpose. If it's to provide the benefit of having an accurate count, you're, when you use, when you make the discretionary decision. As to whether it is because people want privacy, you're asking the moderator to make that assessment. Not on how contentious the discussion has been or the deliberation. Or perhaps the moderator asked for a straw vote and can tell that it's really close. Not necessarily basing her decision on whether privacy is important. But a clicker may be the answer to both questions because she's looking. Because she's looking at the audience and I can't disturb it right now. I, I can't tell and this is a good, a good example of a time we should use clicker. So I'm, I think we're conflating the issues in a way that they ought not be. Um, for the use of clickers, that privacy is not, if we're not talking privacy. I, I personally think it's part of the decision of why we've used it. We've already disbanded the idea that. Clickers will save time. Um, we are, we understand people want to use clickers, fine. We may not know exactly why. We didn't ask them. We didn't say, why do you want to vote with clickers? Um, and so we're trying to make that why decision and leave a lot of discretionary decision to the moderator who. You know, will basically stands at the front and. Can get a sense of the meeting. But you're asking her to rule on whether people want privacy as opposed to whether people want to use a clicker. Um, maybe the moderator is a different decision.
Alice, I'm a bit slow. So, so, um, so what I interpret to say is. You know, we don't need to vote on privacy when, when we're talking about clickers. Uh, uh, and. Basically.
Yes, click is our tool. That will may improve the experience of town meeting, may or may not. We'll find out if we decide to move this forward. But you're, I, I worry that you're, the, a separate vote on privacy. Isn't, uh, isn't what we're looking at for this committee to make a recommendation on. We're looking at the tools that will help move town meeting forward. And if privacy is an issue that was brought up by the public. And we didn't ask the question, we don't, it didn't look like from the data, people were voting that privacy was the reason they wanted clickers. But it's definitely not time, because that's been refuted.
So, so I'm concluding that, that for this particular motion, um, we don't need to talk about privacy for this motion. But that, uh, privacy is an issue for the committee. Uh, and that, that would be something we would address in a separate motion two weeks from now. Uh, Carmen, please.
Just as a data point, I wanted to note that in the exit survey for town meeting in twenty nineteen, after we had the. Uh, the, um, uh, demonstration of the use of, um, electronic voting. Uh, two questions were asked of, of voters. One was whether we should use electronic voting for. Uh, all, uh, votes. And, um, the other was whether we should use electronic voting, um, only for. Uh, votes that we had to count because they were too close or votes that required a two-thirds, um, uh, passage. And, uh. Something like, uh, well, so it was a fifty-three percent were in favor of. Using electronic voting only when we had, we needed to count a vote or when we had a two-thirds vote. And forty percent, uh, were in favor, um, and that's in favor being agree or strongly agree. Uh, for using the, um, clickers for all votes. So, um, the, the, we made that distinction at the time, whether we would use clickers only. When we knew we were going to save time because otherwise we had to count the vote or whether we would use them for every vote. And so that, that was the result of the public, um, uh, thoughts at that time.
So, thank you. So this is a pretty weak motion, right? We think clickers are a good idea. That, that's about it, right? We're not stipulating anything beyond that. Uh, Katie, please.
Uh, sorry, I'm, I think I missed the first number. Was it sixty percent said just voting at, on motions as needed? And then forty percent said, um, voting on all motions. Was that right?
It was fifty-four percent. Wanted to use clickers only for votes that had to be counted because they were too close to call visually. Or, um, votes that required a two-thirds vote, uh, a two-thirds majority, super majority for passage. And forty percent for all votes.
Right, I think.
Just to be clear, you didn't survey on privacy at that time.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, say that again, Eric.
Sorry, and you didn't survey on privacy at that time.
No, but that was what was behind the question, uh, because the, the primary objection. To using electronic voting, uh, that was voiced by town meeting attendees was that. Uh, many people did, uh, like our tradition of, um. Uh, of public votes and they didn't want to see us lose that. Uh, and so, um. The, um, using them, using them only for, using clickers only for a counted vote would get you the. Get you the time saving, but, um, uh, still preserve the public vote because people would have already stood up and voted. Uh, the way we usually do at that point, and then when you know you have to count, uh, that's when you would use the clickers. So that was what was behind the question, uh, was looking at how many people were in favor of just using them for everything. And how many people were, were, um, not in favor of using them for everything, but would be in favor of using them for counted votes. Um, or in those situations where you need a two-thirds vote because, um, you know, there are various legal considerations, uh, for that. We happen to have a bylaw that says, uh, the moderator doesn't have to count a two-thirds vote. Um, but state law says that unless you have a bylaw. Uh, that, uh, doesn't require the counting of a two-thirds vote, you have to count it. Because that's where, you know, sometimes a question can come up, uh, about whether.
Right. Thank you, Katie, and then we're going to conclude.
Yeah, I was gonna say, my personal feeling is having kind of a, a wishy-washy approach to how to vote on different things. Leaves a lot of room for people to be dissatisfied with how meeting runs. So I appreciate a consistent approach for everything. I don't know that, in my opinion, we need to really vote on privacy. I think we're making a recommendation to say like clickers may improve the experience. And that's that, um, when there are other topics that we could spend our time on that would may change things versus privacy.
Uh, Phil, please.
Uh, yeah, so, uh, just to, uh, for Carmen, I think. That the you, the survey in two thousand nineteen, which, uh, said fifty-four percent wanted. The clickers for counted votes includes a request or motion for a private vote. So when somebody, and under the current rules, under the co- current rules, you can move for a private vote. And, uh, if that's the case, that, that's a counted vote.
So, okay, thank you. So, um. Uh, boy, I, I'm learning on the job here. My apologies for that. Um, I do conclude that I would like us to have a vote on privacy, uh, in the following meeting. Uh, I also conclude that I think it's appropriate for us. I want us to have a discussion. I'd like for us to be clear about what we believe. Uh, voting should be like in terms of, in terms of privacy. I think with respect to clickers, we have a motion here. Um, really, we're still discussing whether we're going to make them, whether, whether we're going to vote on this motion or not. Um, my interpretation is this is a pretty, pretty weak motion. Uh, yeah, it says that we support the use of clickers. It doesn't stipulate anything beyond that. And I think that, um, uh, uh, an explicit consideration of privacy in the following meeting would inform. How the moderator would interpret how to use clickers, uh, in, in application. So my conclusion is that, uh, I would like to see us vote on this motion before us tonight. Uh, and then again, come back to privacy two weeks from now. What do I do to move forward in terms of, do we take a vote on the motion?
Because we have discussed it.
Yeah, uh, sorry, David, briefly, please.
Just make, I, I, I believe that whenever you decide tonight on this motion, if you make it. Um, just keep in mind that ten or twenty years down the road, somebody's going to cite this out of context. For, for what they think, for, you know, just as we're, you know, things get cited out of context today. So be very careful about that.
Thank you. Women social too. So, okay. Um, so, uh, that I'd like to see us take a vote then on the motion before us. Uh, the TMSC concludes that the use of clickers may improve the experience of town meeting and therefore recommends use of clickers. Um, I'll go through, um, uh, Keith Bergman, please.
Aye.
Uh, Alice Kaufman, please.
Yes.
Uh, Katie Bresnik, please.
Aye.
Uh, Chase Thompson, please.
Aye.
Uh, Phil, please, uh, Phil Swain, please.
Yes.
Uh, uh, Kristen Haggerty, please.
No.
Okay, uh, Eric Moore. Hi. So, okay, so, so moved, um, I'll, I'll get the count wrong, but we had one, one no and the rest were aye. And again, uh, Eric Van Loon and Parash Shukratel were absent for this vote. Uh, thank you. Moving forward. Okay, uh. So, um, uh, Alice, uh, uh, we have representative town meeting next on, on the agenda. Uh, we spent a long time talking about clickers tonight. I think, let me just give you an opportunity, uh, to express your judgment about. How much time we should invest in representative town meeting tonight? Uh, is this, is this your belief that, uh, this is a, a valuable, uh, thing to be investigating for, for Concord at this time?
Uh, I was responding to the request, uh, from citizens at town meeting saying that. Uh, we should look at representative town meeting as an option for us to improve town meeting. Because they felt that rep- that there were people who came to town meeting and opened town meeting were not representative of the community. So I went about to try and think about that and I talked to a lot of people and did a lot of research. Are you asking what my opinion is or are you asking?
Yeah, what, what is your substantiated opinion, please?
I do not think that representative town meeting would solve the problems that we're, we're looking at and what we've been talking about. The same questions will come up about representativeness of the, those who decide to run and who are finally elected to the position. The people who are, after talking at length to a representative, a representative town meeting member from Lexington. The amount of work that is done by the individuals who are representatives. In a representative town meeting structure is enormous. And it would take an enormous amount of, uh, it would, there are fewer and fewer people who would be willing. To take on that workload for the entire community. Um, making, what happens is people stay in town meeting for, uh, well, they have no term limits in Lexington. So people stay for a very long time. I don't think it would answer the questions about privacy of vote. I don't think it would answer any of the questions about the length of time of town meeting. It would make it so most people don't participate in town meeting and I don't, I also think that that's a, a mistaken judgment. That our government should be open and transparent to everyone in the community.
Good, thank you. Good, thank you. Well, so I, I saw your draft write up and, uh, I hope that you, uh, distribute that to the committee. Uh, in time for our meeting, uh, two weeks from now. Uh, I think your observations are consistent with my observations about the benefits and liabilities of representative town meeting. What problems it would or would not solve. Um, so I don't feel a strong reason to spend more time on this topic tonight. Uh, and I think we can come back to a potential motion, uh, uh, two weeks from now. Uh, Kristen Haggerty, please.
Can we see if I need public comment? Just because people are in the room, but I, I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sort of like, like this, so, uh, is there public comment on this? Uh, representative town meeting, different than, uh, the Australian ballot topic. Uh, okay, good, thank you. Uh, moving forward, um, anybody else from the committee with a comment on, at this time in representative town meeting? No, thank you. Uh, moving forward, okay, Australian ballot, AKA referendum ballot or local ballot questions from town meeting. Uh, Dino Skanatos was the, uh, sponsor of, of citizen petition at town meeting twenty-four. Uh, Dinos is asked to spend five minutes or so, uh, uh, presenting. I have the, I have that slide here, uh, that, that deck here. So Dino, I'll give you five minutes or so to present and then we'll discuss.
Okay, great.
Uh, give me just a moment to get this slide up on the screen.
All right.
Dinos, thank you for coming. As part of your, um, slides. Do you tell us what prompted you to look into this? And if not, could you?
Sure, um, so. My background includes work on gerrymandering and representation in democracy. And I've been an expert witness in Pennsylvania to, to see that legislative districts were apportioned fairly. And so I care a lot about. Representation and making sure that there, there are limited hurdles to voting. And that instead of having a, a state where the election goes fifty-fifty, but once, one party gets sixty-five percent of the seats. And the other party gets about a third. Majorities rule. And so that generally where you have majorities, they get the most seats and are able to make the decisions that reflect the. The will of the people. So that was work that I did after the twenty-twenty redistricting cycle. And I'm, I'm from Pennsylvania originally, so, but we don't have town meetings, I must admit. Um, so here's some, just some brief background on, I, I'm sure you've all seen this slide before. But it just shows how the, the town meeting attendance has, has declined over, over time slowly. And the town elections, on the other hand, when they're competitive, can draw a reasonable amount of people. And the, the town election we had this last cycle, this spring, had a thirty-one percent turnout. And while we did have a turnout of around eleven or twelve hundred people for the high interest. Questions on the town warrant about the high school. When that was over, people didn't come back. So on average, the. Percentage of people, of, of the voters who show up to town meeting is, is not super high. And so that leads you to an anomalous picture in the next slide. Where we have a structure where we have the select and school board committees that get elected with a reasonable amount of turnout. And they give recommendations that then get approved or debated by town meeting where we have a relatively small turnout. So it's an anomalous because the direct democracy piece here is. A, a far smaller fraction of our population than, than the representative piece at the board level. And the board level, I should also say, just, you know, as this meeting tonight indicates, has people that really commit a lot of time drilling down in depth. We've got selectmen who I found to be very accessible or the finance committee. And if there's an issue they've got a question about, they'll go and talk to the, the town department heads or talk to the engineers. And, and really find out what's going on. And a town meeting does, not only does not afford that opportunity, but. There's su- such a small percentage of the people participating that it's, it's really. Anti-representative in, in a certain way. And so that's why, that's why other, other states have now gone to an Australian ballot and having. Having a, a separate vote that is apart from the deliberation. So one question that people ask and a common criticism is that town meeting is a legislature. Or the deliberation is an important piece. But if you look at the professional legislators, legislatures that we have, the, the US Congress and state legislatures, the. Deliberation from the floor rarely happens. And people have this vision of, you know, Mr. Smith goes to Washington and very occasionally like. The January seventh of twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, when we had the, the whole, the whole certification fiasco. There were speeches from the floor, but that's extremely rare. So another piece that is important is a form requirement. Uh, all legislatures. Have a fifty-one percent requirement. And yet town meeting has none because if you did, you never get a form. E- even our, our town, our town committees, of course, all have forms. And yet a third piece, I'll just conclude with is that compensation for legislators is, is important. It's in the constitution to make sure that you don't just get independently wealthy people with a lot of spare time. And that would be unrepresentative of, of your population. And in town meeting, what you have is people that are being asked to give up their time, either their personal time or sometimes they're working. But, but even more, the people that have childcare responsibilities have then have to undertake, you know, the, the house and the expense of childcare. So that's, again, as, as we all know, there's sort of a demographic hole there. So that, that's another reason supporting an Australian ballot that would allow everybody to conveniently make their voice heard. And how, how that works is on the next slide. So I had a, a interesting conversation on this with Jim Rubens, who is the state senator from New Hampshire. Who actually got that passed back in nineteen ninety-five. So New Hampshire and Vermont both, both had the system. And the way Jim explained it to me was there's a first session with an open meeting, much like the current town meetings with debates and amendments. But, but not final votes. Then several weeks later, there, there's a vote, yes, no vote at the polls. And then there's a, a very important aspect that he said that what you don't want is a situation where no budget is passed. And there's no, no authorization to spend money for the town. And so the way that works, it isn't a yes, no vote. It's a yes, approve the, the committee's recommendations. But, or no, we're going to go with the default budget, which is the same amount of money that was spent prior year. And then there's details in the legislation on how this adjusted for the non-recurring expenses and capital expenses. Like if you bought a fire truck last year. Like if you bought a fire truck last year, but you don't have to buy that fire truck this year, then that piece is excluded from the budget. So that's how they, they, they address that important problem. And then on the next slide, so, you know, there's pros and cons and, you know, you're all were debating pros and cons of clickers. And you could do the same with, with Australian ballot. And I think, you know, an important pro is, you know, everybody's the chance to vote and you can really, this turnout, the con is the, the attendance at the, the first session has, has, would probably decline some. On the other hand, you, you know, everybody has the chance to attend meetings like this and, and go to the select committee and, and make comments there. And, and there's a raft of them, pros and cons, but there, there's no single pro and con for every town. And if you, and, and I'm not, you know, I'm trying, I'm not going to go through all these. I'm just indicating that they're all, all these pros and cons and on the next slide. So each town weighs on its own what the pros and the cons are for them. And it's not so much for this committee to say, well, you know, we think that this is this way and this is this way, but it's kind of up to the town to decide. And obviously the state would have to decide because new legislation will be required. But in Vermont, fifty percent of, of the town, if, if they, if they vote to approve the, the Australian ballot, they get approved. And, and New Hampshire requires a sixty percent majority. And in New Hampshire, about a third of the towns and two-thirds of the school districts have this. And in Vermont, forty percent of the towns. And I, I know, you know, people here on the call will have, you know, very strong views, one way or the other, but those views will be different depending on, on, on what, what, what the, the citizens would want. And obviously not every town will be the same. And I, you know, we've got the survey that indicated, you know, strong support even without a lot of education on this process, which was described, described in just a couple of sentences, but we don't have the background of seeing how it's implemented and done in other places. So you know, it's something to consider.
Good.
That, that's my, those are my comments.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, any comments or questions from the committee?
I have a question.
Uh, please.
Um, so are, is your, um, presumption that the Australian ballot would be a more representative? Would, would represent the town as a whole better? Is that what the, the outcome might be or just more voters?
Well, both go hand in hand. And in New Hampshire, they've gotten significant improvements in turnout. I didn't look at a statistical report of that, but they did report a turnout to up to fifty percent in the second round.
Okay.
There, I did, I did look at a report on that. And it's, so the link to that and the, um, the brief that I wrote on this topic, um, I believe, um, and, uh, uh, it's that participation in the, in the deliberation session went way down.
Right, right.
And that there was a multi- a multiple effect in terms of the, the voting participation. So many more people voted.
Um, and I guess I'm thinking about the representativeness of the, of the voting. So for example, um, if we were to look at your slide with, um, you know, the, how many people voted in the presidential and the, and the town elections, things like that. And I think we said that in town elections on a good year, we get like twenty-five percent or thirty-one percent. Have we looked at that by district or by age? You know, I'm, I'm curious to know, um, I know that we've had-
Do that, we haven't done that. I mean, the, there was a study from thirty years ago.
Right.
That looked at that, um, um, that indicated that there was a bias in the distribution, but that the, there wasn't a shift in pattern.
Right.
Between the town elections and the town meeting.
I guess that's kind of what I was curious about. So I would be curious to know, um, if we had more people at the poll, would that just be more, you know, people that were representing, that were the same demographics of go to town meeting?
Right.
Or, and, or, um, you know, thinking about representative town meeting, which I know we're not doing, but that would be represented by district. And so, you know, you're talking about districting and gerrymandering and things like that.
Yeah.
So, you know, is there any data about when we go to town, or when we go to the polls, how representative is that by district?
Yeah, there is data. It's, it's available to political parties. Uh, you and I can't get it on our own. The town may have it and the town might choose to disclose it. I mean, we can find out, there's a voter file. So it's known for every voter, when they voted, how they voted, all that kind of stuff. But I can't, I can't access it myself. But it's, it is available to certain people that are authorized.
It's actually public information, the voter files.
It isn't actually. I, I, you can get your own record.
If they voted.
I can get my own record. I've, I've looked on, on the Massachusetts thing.
Okay.
But the political parties have it. So I've accessed it as a political party analyst.
Okay. Uh, I want to move forward. Thank you. Thank you, Krista. Uh, Katie, please?
Yeah, I think just one correction. So the nineteen ninety-six report looking at um, participation in town meeting versus voting at the polls for local elections. It did show that town meeting is approximately similar in terms of age distribution for those that, that went to the polls at that time to vote. However, it did show that parents or households with caregiving responsibilities were, um, not represented as much at town meeting as they were at the polls. And so there is a representation issue, at least there was at that time, and I can only imagine that that still exists today. Um, and-
Shifted more, I mean, would, would be, it would be a bigger issue now, given that it's easier to vote now.
I would think so.
To go to town meeting.
That would be my guess, that that is quite substantial. Um, and at least for me personally, I'm, I'm feeling a little bit discouraged in the lack of ways for me to participate. Um, and this is a way that would allow me to participate. Um, and so I very much appreciate, um, the outside the box thinking on this.
Good, thank you. Um, Carmen, uh, yes, I have a question for you, please. Maybe you can answer this. It was, I, I didn't, I didn't feel correct to ask the clerk about this last week, but, so in terms of implementation, um, um, my understanding is that, you know, we could have a local ballot question either on the regular municipal election in the fall or we can't have a local ballot question on a special election and the, and the, and the, you know, uh, otherwise. So is that your understanding that there's flexibility for getting local ballot questions on a regular ballot, uh, but not on the special election ballot? I did a ton of reading and I couldn't answer it, so.
Yeah, uh, that, that, that is my understanding, but, um, we are limited in what kinds of questions we can put um, on a regular ballot. So I do not believe we would be authorized, for example, to put the town budget um, on, um, the, um, regular town ballot and have people, um, vote on that. We are required to, um, by statute to, uh, yeah, do all of our appropriations, uh, through, uh, town meeting and all of our zoning bylaws, uh, through town meeting resolutions. Um, uh, we can do, um, uh, and, uh, we have done approvals of, of bylaws, um, in the general, uh, election. And of course, there's certain statutory authorizations. Um, uh, Proposition Two and a Half, uh, debt exclusions and overrides are one set of exceptions. Adoption of the, uh, Community Preservation Act is another one. And I believe there are certain other state programs which if a town is going to adopt, need to go to the polls. But in general, you need a specific statutory authorization in, in order for a town to put anything on either a special or a general, uh, town, um, election ballot.
Got it. So, so, so there is a mechanism now for, is it for a, a narrow set of thing. So, so most of what we do at town meeting, we could not, could not or would not put onto a special election ballot or a regular election ballot. There's some things like some, as you said, resolutions or, uh, citizen petitions that are advisory. Might, we might be able to put those on either ballot or at least on a, on a regular election ballot. But in terms of the law as it stands now, if we wanted to really pursue the vision of, of Australian ballot for town meeting, this is where we would need to, to make the home rule petition to allow, uh, uh, either a specific or broader class of questions on either the special election ballot in June, you know, or May, or the fall municipal, municipal ballot.
Yes.
Got it. Um, so how hard do you think it would be to get that through? Uh, um, uh, that's a, that's a judgment about the political, uh, about the legislative process and the sensitivity around, uh, you, you know, expanding the scope of what can go onto a ballot.
You know, um, I'm no expert on the legislature, but what I would observe is the, um, profound reluctance that the legislature has had in the face of various home rule petitions that would change anything related to town meeting. So, um, you know, even during COVID, when special legislation was enacted to allow, uh, remote, um, meetings by representative, uh, town meetings, the legislature declined to extend that authority, even to teeny open town meetings such as Gosnold, uh, where they've got, you know, I think they have, they have under five hundred voters. And, uh, uh, and they felt that, you know, it, if, if a representative town meeting could do it, they could do it and uh, they wanted to be able to. And, um, the legislature was, uh, unwilling, unwilling to do it.
So, so, um, you know, people want to turn out to vote for the school budget. Uh, and then there are, I think, you know, the, just judging by the spike in turnout, right? That, that's a popular thing to vote for. Um, but the, um, mechanism of both town election and the regulation around what can and can't go on, on, onto a ballot suggests it's actually both, both not a good idea um, from a, 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 a budget cycle perspective and difficult from, or not legal from a regulatory perspective to put the school budget on, on a special election ballot. So it seems like a non-starter until we can get a home rule petition for that. Other things that are, um, compelling that people want to come out and vote for, um, citizen petitions, maybe they're focused in a bylaw, like a bottle ban or, you know, a bag ban. Uh, the, um, Ellen Garrison, uh, question, uh, wasn't, it wasn't a citizen petition. It came from a board, but, but, you know, we wanted to vote on that. So, um, the, so things that people want to come out and vote for aren't easy to put on a ballot. Um, the, the, so my question is, um, is it, do we as a committee try to define and invest in, uh, a, a vision of a home rule petition that gives more access to the ballot for, for the questions that are really compelling for our town? I'll go to Katie.
I think I see this like similar to the remote voting as I don't, it doesn't seem like there is a real way to put any of the warrant articles as it stands now, but the question is really, should we encourage or authorize the, the powers that be to pursue this as an option? So that's kind of how I see this and, and maybe that's the question. And I bet there are differences of opinion on that question here. So maybe it's deciding whether, how we're feeling and whether we want to pursue that.
Mm-hmm, thank you. Uh, Carmen, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one qualifier and that is that, um, you know, the legislature is more willing to uh, take favorable action on a home rule petition where they've already got a model for it. So for example, uh, there already is a limited referendum, uh, option provided for uh, votes by, uh, representative town meetings. And there are at least two open town meeting towns that have provisions in their charters that allow, uh, in limited circumstances, a pretty high threshold of, um, of voters to, um, uh, to, uh, 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 to, uh, file a petition to have a vote at town meeting reconsidered at the polls. And, um-
That's Hopkinton and, uh, is one of them, right?
Long Meadow, right. And, and
Yeah.
Long Meadow, it, it specifically excludes the budgets and zoning bylaws. Um, so y- y- those cannot go to a referendum vote, but a citizen petition could or, um, uh, something like, uh, an advisory vote on, uh, on the naming of a school such as we had, you know, something like that. Uh, be a referendum vote that, uh, that went to the polls. So since those are provisions that exist in a couple of places, or let's take the, um, uh, the, uh, uh, the leaf blower ban. If there were, uh, uh, in Long Meadow, if that had been enacted and there were the requisite, the requisite threshold of people said, let's put that one on the ballot, uh, that could go on the ballot under their charter. So for Concord to have a provision like that, we would need to move to amend our charter through special legislation. Uh, and, um, I would guess that given the fact that there are examples for that, that the legislature can look at and say, nothing horrible happened, uh, you'd be more likely of success, uh, with one of those.
So thank you. So, so like with that bottle bill, I think it was under, I think it was under Eric Van Loon when he was moderator. There were three or four meetings where that, that, that came up?
Five.
Five. So, so in a way, right?
Yes, Eric Van Loon has joined and Eric, Eric Van Loon is, is, has joined and we did have votes on the bottle bill three consecutive years of, uh, at annual town meeting when I was moderator.
So, so they do it then you-
The, the one, uh, and it relates a little bit to this. The one interesting thing is it, it passed uh, one year and people were upset that the number of people who had voted was, were, in their perception, too small. So the next year, uh, it was placed as a high interest article. There were lawn signs all over the town. The number of people who came to town meeting and voted, um, that was almost exactly double what it had been the previous year. And remarkably, the percentage was within one percentage point of, of exactly the same. So, um, uh, it doesn't necessarily mean that people's perception, that if more people were present at the meeting, the outcome would, would change, uh, that those perceptions are correct.
Sure. So, so thank you, Eric, and welcome. Um, so, so one option, right, one appeal of, of the Australian ballot is that it's easier for, for voters to express themselves at the ballot box than it is to get to town meeting in person. A second appeal is that, um, uh, you can have more participation. The point you just made is that outcomes don't necessarily change with a larger sample of the public, but you can get more people involved. We have a mechanism now whereby, uh, if you didn't like the result in town meeting XYZ, you can come back the next meeting and relitigate it. Um, so, so, um, you know, I think that, that is a mechanism that we have relative to making an investment in a recall provision. Where do we go with this? Where, where, um, do, is there support in the committee for investing more, uh, in the possibility of a home rule petition to get more things on a, on a local ballot? Does anybody champion that? Uh, Phil?
Uh, I'm not in favor of it, but I think it's part of our job to make a recommendation on this. So, uh, whether we do it today or, um, sometime after we do our other suite of recommendations, I think we do need to have, uh, you know, say something about it. Even if it's just, this was considered, but not recommended at this time.
So, so I, I wrote a brief, uh, that was in the packet, which I didn't read. Have, have folks read that? That was my best shot at providing the context and the question. Uh, do we feel, and really the question is, do as a committee, do we feel well enough informed to make a decision about this? Uh, see no from Phil. Uh, Katie, I'll go to you, please.
Um, I don't think we're well enough informed to make a decision. I think there are actually very few things that would allow parents to participate, and this is one of them. Um, although it seems iffy on what kinds of things we could potentially vote on at the polls. Um, and what number of people maybe would, would need to bring something to the polls, but, um, I think there are very few options for involving caregivers. Um, and this is one of them potentially.
So you would like to find a way, if I interpret that correctly?
Um, I would love to go to the polls and vote. I would love to listen to deliberation and then vote in any way that I can vote. That's not attending town meeting for three days in a row at night, which I can't do. Um, and so if I could vote on, at a poll, I would love to do that.
Good, thank you. Um, Krista?
Um, I find-
Um I find I I find this pretty complex, like more complex than we've been able to boil it down to tonight. So to weigh in on this, I'd really like to say, you know, if then, like, this is okay, this is what we could go to the poll and, you know, if those go to the poll, this is how it changes town meeting. Just um these are the things that would absolutely never go to the poll, things like that, like.
Okay. Um so it needs to marinate. Yeah.
I mean, I just, I I know you did a brief. I know we've had this before, like we, I there was supposed to be a um some questions on the Carmen, maybe it was the the March era that like the spring ballot. And then the select board had to take them off because they found out that they couldn't go on like.
Do that, yeah.
Right. And so like, there's quite a few stipulations that I I don't understand. And I wonder if we can put them in like five bullet points. This yes can go on, no can't go on.
So so uh um so what I'm hearing, right, is we don't feel like we know enough to vote yea or nay um on the prospect and that we need some more information. Uh at the moment, I'm not clear uh what additional information that needs to be. I understand about boiling it down. Um so but I'm gonna take at this point then that we're gonna move on. And uh if someone has uh some specific suggestions as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, before you move on, I thought you were po- polling the whole committee and that you'd be getting to me, although apologies for uh.
Eric, what do you think?
Being late. Um, well, I think two things. One is that uh Carmen's uh email summarized a lot of the complexities of actually trying to do this. Um but I think that there's an additional consideration, at least that I haven't um heard mentioned yet. And that is thinking about the overall sort of impact and doability of our recommendations. Um I think that any recommendation that basically is saying, go to the legislature and get a change, obviously is a complicated one, going to take a lot of energy and a lot of attention. I think if we were to have three different recommendations of going to the the legislature, we'd we'd really uh run into the possibility of of weakening our focus, weakening weakening things getting done. Um this is at least a second one. Um and I'm not clear uh at all that we have a a enough clarity or enough of a rationale to want to uh at least for me personally, add this as a second thing to go to the legislature. Um and this is in a context where with apologies, because of being on an airplane, I had, I missed the earlier part of the uh of our committee deliberations. So I I don't know whether we have voted um on going to the legislature on remote uh uh remote participation, but I'm I'm certainly in favor of that if uh.
Oh, Eric, thank you.
Whenever that comes up.
Um um we we remote participation is not on the agenda tonight, so no worries there. And I think I interpret what you're saying as well as if you have to spend a dollar, you would spend it on remote participation and and not on this. Uh and in terms of.
Both.
Yes.
And not on both.
Well put. Well put.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Uh Keith Bergen, please.
Yeah, thanks. Uh I I would uh a- a- and I'm I'm speaking from thirty seven years' experience as a town manager in various communities. And I find this proposal the most unworkable of any that we're considering. It's it's we're not, we don't have a uh the backup system that our Vermont or New Hampshire has, there's no structure uh at state government to support uh all of the uh uh things that 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 could go wrong. Uh if there's a disconnect and and uh we have to bring matters from town meeting to uh to a uh plebiscite election uh and find that it doesn't pass the election and we're stuck with no budgets or the prior year's budget or whatever, whatever the rules end up being. Um and so this I I uh and I'm with uh Eric Van Loon that if we're gonna go to the legislature on one thing, let let's do it on remote voting and not, and I would say not this. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Uh Katie, please.
Um I agree with um all that folks are saying. I think that doing this is inconsistent with also being advocating for remote voting. I think my general preference would be to do something like this, and I think it would be more inclusive of members of the community. However, I agree, it seems the least likely to move forward, in in which case I think I'm in support of um remote voting over pursuing this.
Uh thank you, Katie. Uh Chase, let me get your opinion, please.
Coming off mute. Yeah, I would echo.
Thank you.
I would echo what Katie said. Um you know, I thought this was really well presented and, you know, in some ways compelling. I I'm off camera because my little ones came down and I had to put them to bed. And, you know, if I were at a town meeting, that would wouldn't have happened. Um but it does feel like this is a really big thing to evaluate in and of itself and maybe not something that we're prepared to do in the short term without a lot more information. And if we're really aiming for something that drives significant participation and helps, you know, families or people that have a hard time getting there, I think remote participation is the answer to that.
All right. Thank you. Um comment from the room here?
Actually, I'll have a comment.
Please.
Yeah. Um so in my discussion with uh sure, in my discussion with with Jim Rubin, he said, it's very important to have a champion in the state legislature. So and I think what I'm hearing sort of echoes that, that you're trying to like figure out, you've got, you know, a little a threat of influence, how to how to husband that, why, you know, as effectively as possible, and I and I totally get it. Um so that's the comment.
Good. Thank you. Thank you. So reading the room, I think without a motion, uh I don't see a strong case to invest further uh in in this particular um possibility. I don't think we need to vote it down. Um but I also think uh um we don't have a vision of of sort of how to make it work, uh even in sort of a very economical way. Um so I'm gonna move forward without a vote. Oh, sorry, I see uh uh Scott Gillis, please.
Uh good, good evening, everybody. Thank you very much, Eric. Um I just wanted to share some information that some of you, maybe all of you are already aware of. The town of Westford at their recent um town meeting approved a um a approved the pursuit of a home rule petition for their open town meeting. And you can go read it. You can read what was approved. And that motion was broader than just remote voting. It included remote voting. Um I believe some kind of Australian ballot or some other method um as deemed appropriate by the town. And and I can't remember the exact words, but I, when I read it, I thought, ah, that's creative. And it's it's fundamentally, a- as I understood it, was saying, legislature, please recognize our desire to control our uh town meeting in our town the way we determine will best serve our town. And it wasn't as narrow as remote voting or as narrow as Australian ballot ballot. It was quite broad. Um so so I just, I didn't know whether uh the committee was aware of that recent um town meeting approval in the town of West Westford. And then the second uh the second comment I would make is that uh it's been said by many, many times that um the likelihood of a home rule petition increases with the number of towns that are suing and are requesting it. So um I I would just suggest that um whether something is easy or hard to do, maybe isn't the first question, maybe the first question is, do we think something like this might be good for our town? For example, the comments that Katie made and Chase made about um including families with children. If we think it might be something that's good for our town, expressing that thought might be good. And then the secondary thought would be, okay, if we like the idea, it might be harder, it might be easy, but then there could be some creative thinking about how we might accomplish it.
So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah. And the the Westford thing is news to me, so I'll learn more about that. So thank you for that specifically as well.
You're welcome.
Uh Eric Van Loon, I see your hand up. I'm not sure if that's your hand or or not.
Um I don't uh I don't know how to raise or lower my hand on my phone.
Fair enough.
So it was not intended to be. Sorry about that.
That's all right, Eric. Thank you. So, okay, I'm gonna move forward then. I think I'll do some homework about Westford. Um again, I don't think that we need a motion here. Uh and uh I'll give it some more creative thought and see if there's any any vision of a way forward. Uh Scott, I thought your point was interesting about are there other towns that would see this as interesting? Uh and that said, I'll I'll move forward at this time. Uh all right. So thank you. Um the next item, uh so at eight forty two, uh I'm I'll talk about this briefly, but we're not really gonna talk about it. Um uh uh we had a citizen suggestion about basically deliberating on two nights and voting a third night. I addressed the question with Carmen, our moderator. Uh and um uh we don't know how to make it work in terms of parliamentary procedure, uh basically. Uh so so it's an interesting idea, uh but I think within the framework that we have, with it, it doesn't work as a mechanism. Thank you, Dinos.
Thanks. Thanks, Eric.
Um so uh the the.
So I I believe that that is so that people know when the votes were gonna be. Is that kind of what the impetus?
I think my interpretation of the suggestion, which I I liked, um was that, you know, I if I know when the vote's gonna be, I can go and vote.
Right.
I don't have to go sit through and, you know, a long ambiguously scheduled uh deliberation one night. We can just get all of our voting done in one night. Maybe I could remote, you know, attend to the deliberation remotely. Uh so it's a sort of a split the difference on remote participation. But again, within the procedure that we have, we don't know how to make that work.
Oh, and and I agree. I guess related to that, I mean, I've I've heard the same thing. So I've been trying to talk to, you know, caregivers because our, although our survey, you know, got gave us quite a bit of information, it didn't, it was kind of like, are you more likely to attend? And we heard back from people, oh, you know, that was a tough way to ask it. But what I didn't get back is, when could you attend? And and the answer is basically never. I will, I can never be there. Like, I cannot come at night. I cannot come two nights in a row. I cannot come in the morning like. And then, because I extended the discussion about like, when could you participate in meetings and things like that? We can, I'd like to love to talk about that at the next meeting, but related to this, um what if we had an agenda that says from seven to seven twenty, we're gonna talk about this? And like every article was scheduled. And I know from attending, that doesn't seem realistic. But I I heard from a couple of people, well, like, if I knew it was gonna be at eight o'clock.
Right.
I can, I can show up at eight o'clock on that day and leave. And so, you know, I know we do it for high interest articles. I would put this on the table for the future discussion.
Mm hmm.
You know, could we just schedule everything?
Yeah, I'd like to come back to that.
Really like, say like, what, we're cutting off debate? Like, I know you guys want to talk about it more and have to go to the coffee shop and do it up.
Yeah, no, there's something there. I'd like to come back to that in another meeting. Uh.
So yes, I agree that procedurally that, you know, this wouldn't work. I read kind of the opening and closing. But, you know, if if that's the premise of it, I want to know when the vote's gonna be and and be present.
Yeah.
Um I would consider that when we talk next.
Good. Thank you. Um citizen assemblies, um I just need to plug in. Um uh are are um uh uh we're not gonna spend time on them tonight. They're an interesting idea uh in terms of uh finding ways uh to have sort of, again, splitting splitting the difference between, I'll say, a representative town meeting. Uh uh where it's like, it's like putting together a jury. Um uh people are drawn at random. Uh you have a a, you know, a period of time, could be an afternoon, could be a weekend, could be a couple of nights to really get informed about an issue uh and to discuss it as a group. Um um so it's an interesting idea. Um I think, you know, I would see the citizen assembly as a kind of a complement to the hearings that we have now. Um the hearings that we have now in the context of leading up to town meeting uh are pretty structured. They're really sort of dress rehearsals for presentations that will come to meeting. They're really serving to help uh the planning board or or the the uh finance committee uh or the select board. I I rule out surprises at meeting. Uh the they're not great opportunities right now for really deep conversation uh around issues. So so um the citizen assembly uh concept or the neighborhood assembly concept uh is a way to complement both the deliberation. It's a way to provide a venue for the deliberation that's not necessarily happening in depth at town meeting, nor is it happening in the hearings. Uh there's a lot, I think, involved in making it work. Um and, you know, I think um uh a- again, and and the concept of sort of, you know, how do we extend deliberation? That's the idea of the citizen assembly. I think the question that it had is if this group saw this as an interesting possibility to explore further. Um Phil, I'll recognize you.
Uh so um we already have these in the form of the forums that are conducted by the finance committee on the school budget, on the uh town budget and on the enterprise budget. So uh that pretty much covers most of the articles that are considered at the town meeting. And if other articles, we could add another forum on non-budget related. Uh but that forum is what you're talking about. Citizens get to ask questions. It's called a hearing, so that's a little more formal than a focus group. But we already have these and and they're pretty effective. We get a good turnout to those.
Good. Yeah, good. Uh thank you. Um Carmen and then Katie, please.
Uh we do actually have a hearing, a pre-town meeting hearing on every single warrant article that is on uh the warrant. And um we're one of the, if not the only, one of the only towns in Massachusetts that does that. Uh and we do televise those and do them. Uh we didn't last year do them hybrid, but um but but we will be doing them um hybrid going forward. So those really are community forums that uh allow for broader conversation. Um and I just wanted to note that uh I found the motions that were uh brought to Westford's special town meeting that Scott Gillis just mentioned, and I've sent them to you, Eric, and to
Uh, thank you.
Shannon for circulation.
Cool. Thank you. Um uh Katie and then then uh Kristen?
Um I guess I would be curious to see what impact we think this would have. Um because I don't know that this would reduce the length of town meeting. Um I think it would help inform people who are already informed potentially. Um so I'm curious what your, the the group's take on the impact.
Good. Thank you. Um uh Kristen, please.
Uh related to what Carmen was saying about that, like the town meeting preview, the select board was just talking about that at their recent meeting about whether they were gonna hold it this year or not um for timing reasons. But one of the minor discussions they had was, you know, does the town meeting study committee want to kind of use that time as like an educational space or something to let people know? Um but to Katie's point, you know, what the depending on who we are trying to include, who is not already there, if it is caregivers, one more meeting is not going to
Sure.
address their issue. Um I I I mean, I think anytime we're helping people to be more informed, I think that's that's relevant. But um, you know, if we really isolate the things that we're trying to move the needle on, that might not be it.
Good. Thank you. I think, you know, part of the uh idea with the citizen assemblies is that as we streamline deliberation, as we have less time to talk about stuff, yet we still need to talk about things.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we make a space to do more talking?
Yeah.
Um so that could be at the pre-town meeting hearings. Uh um it could be, you know, via the league. Uh it could be this mechanism. It could be some other setting for forums. And to your point, you know, if it's hard to show up, it doesn't help.
Right. I mean, I love the idea of of more opportunities to listen to each other. Um especially, you know, you think like, okay, so just like you're saying, we'll make meetings shorter for you, you know, but will you commit to listening to each other outside? And I think we know the answer to that, but I still, I still like considering it.
What's the answer?
Uh, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Listen to the recording. I know.
So uh last item on the agenda.
Hand raised. Hand hand raised.
Okay.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Nicely done, Eric. Yes, please.
Sorry, I I it's the best I can do. Um I I did want just uh building on what Phil said a minute ago. Um uh for those who are not familiar, and you you mentioned in passing, Eric, the the League of Women Voter uh forum, they have one every year where they literally go through um every single uh item, and it's an it's a easy, informal kind of meeting where people can come and discuss and ask questions. It's also during the day uh so that it might be more accessible to uh younger families that had kids who were in school, and that's still, you know, gonna be a challenge for kids under age five or whatever. Um but um I I I do think their their meetings are both informal and accessible and comprehensive. And helping to to publicize that more maybe could be uh helpful with um with younger families.
Good, thank you. Uh really, really fast?
I was just gonna add, as a league
Stephen Vader, please. Yeah?
Thank you. As a as a league board member, I just wanted to thank uh Eric Van Loon for that shout out and add that those uh forums are recorded and they're accessible and they're well watched after the fact. And if people have questions, they can always send in an email in advance of the meeting and get their question asked that way, even if they can't attend live.
Good, thank you.
And and I have considered, like, because they're often at the library, I've considered whether there can be like childcare, like a child programming at the same time, so young parents could come. But I didn't get a lot of uptake when I did a little poll for that, but.
So last, thank you. That's the last item on the agenda. Um so uh on the tw- on the second of December, we're presenting to this, you know, the we'll be discussing with the select board uh what I think about communicating, what we where we focused, what we've learned, what we recommend so far, and the work ahead. Um I think, you know, the question, we've addressed some of this tonight, what do we need to formally agree on? What do we need a motion? Uh so we will talk more about private voting, uh and I'd like to, I'd like to see a motion come out of that. Uh we did address clickers tonight with the emotion uh in favor of using them. Uh remote participation, I think we'll vote on. Uh uh we will vote on remote participation uh for pursuit of home rule. Um I think the the local voting business, the 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 Australian ballot business, we may not have a motion on that. Um if if uh at this point, we may not. Uh and then finally, uh in our next meeting, uh Keith um Bergman will present uh on uh understanding sort of the picture with respect to spring and fall town meeting. Uh and I think that we'll we'll look for a motion on that as well. Uh Katie, please?
Just one potential item to think about. I don't know where it might fit in is proxy voting. I know this has been done maybe in the past, but I think that would help families a lot is being able to have one partner attend and vote for both people. Um so if that if we could discuss that at some point, um that would be great.
Good, thank you. Uh Carmen to you, and then I think we're gonna close after that. Uh please?
I I do think that you need to make a recommend, the committee needs to make a recommendation on the Australian ballot issue, one way or the other. Because that's um that was um a town meeting warrant article that was referred to this committee for recommendation.
Fair enough, thank you. Uh and you know, uh beyond the select board meeting, we have lots of things to talk about, uh lots of things to work on, but uh let's get to there, let's get to there next. Um I'm gonna say thank you, everyone, for your kind attention and coming and uh for your contributions as well. Uh lot of discussion tonight. Thank you very much. Uh and with that, uh the time is just about nine o'clock, uh eight fifty-five PM, and we are closed.